Please call the June 24, 2025 meeting of the High Point Regional High School Board of Education to order. Please stand forth and vouch for this. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The Open Public Meetings Act statement, New Jersey Open Public Meetings law, was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with provisions of the Act, the Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted at the Augusta, Branchville, and Sussex post offices, and notice sent to the New Jersey Herald, the Sunday Herald, and the Clerk of the boroughs of Branchville, Sussex, and the townships of Frankfurt, Lafayette, and Montage. Mission statement: High Point Regional High School, in partnership with staff, family, and community, is dedicated to the quest for individual excellence. By fostering high standards of achievement, we prepare students to become responsible and productive members of a diverse society. Could I ask where we're all?
Mr. Dunn.
Present.
Ms. Diaz. Present. Ms. Ball.
Here.
Ms. Lumber.
Here.
Ms. Orson.
Here.
Ms. Shuman.
Here.
Mr. Danstone.
Here.
Ms. Wise.
Here.
Dr. Ridley.
Here.
A motion will now be made that the High Point Regional High School Board of Education enter executive session to provide an update on legal personnel and negotiations items which are exempt from public participation pursuant to New Jersey Public Law 1975, Chapter 231, Open Public Meetings Act. Any discussions held by the Board which need not remain confidential will be made public when appropriate. Minutes of the executive session will not be disclosed until the need for confidentiality no longer exists. The Board will reconvene in public session, in person and virtually at the conclusion of the executive session. It is not anticipated that any action will be taken. I will make that motion, may I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. (end of transcript)
May I have a motion to return to public session, please?
To the room?
In a second.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we are back in public session. Uh, that brings us to approval of minutes for the regular meeting minutes of May twenty seven, twenty twenty five and executive session minutes of May twenty seven, twenty twenty five. And we'll make that motion. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Any discussion, comments, corrections on those minutes? Basically, none.
Ms. Shugman?
Uh, yes.
Uh, Ms. Diaz?
Epstein.
Miss Call?
Epstein.
Mr. Vanstone?
Yes.
Ms. Lombard?
Yes.
Ms. Wise?
Yes.
Ms. Worsing?
Epstein.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
That's sufficient to pass. Okay, excellent. Um, that brings us to public comments on agenda items only in accordance with Open Public Meetings Act, we will open public comments at this time. Each speaker should state his or her name and address. We'll have three minutes to address the board, which will be timed by myself. We will limit this section to no longer than forty-five minutes. Please be respectful and mindful that your comments are being recorded. And we have either in-person, in the room, or virtual. Do we have anything on our virtual? Seeing no comments, may I have a motion to close public comments?
Motion.
In a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, moving on to presentations. HPA president, Ms. Betts Sunda, will update us on HPA activities. You're welcome.
Good evening. I hope you have a good night, right? Um, I'd like to reintroduce myself, since I'm more than here last month, so this is my second official act as the HPA president. My name is Elizabeth Sunda. I'm a science teacher here at High Rock High School, and I've been here for this, for twenty-two years. So, I just wanted to reintroduce myself. Um, I know it hasn't even been seven days since graduation, um, but it has been six days of the nice work for you. Um, but I also wanted to thank you for the time you put in as well. I know your job is not always easy, um, so I look forward to working with you, all of you. So if you have any questions, um, for me at any point, or any other reps that might come, if I don't make it, um, but I just want you to know that I do value your time. Um, right now, we have nothing really to update you on. I know personally, I have a workshop coming up in July. I know we'll have some teachers coming in to work on new curriculum writing and things like that. Um, I also have, um, thank you for approving my forensic trip, but I think next week I'm doing three days on NJIT. Um, but other than that, I don't really have anything to report. So, thank you. And again, if at any time you need discussion too while we're here, um, please, thanks.
Thanks, Ms. Sunda. Uh, Ms. Campbell, are you going to give both principals' report and break room instruction, or?
I'll, I'll make the principals' report very brief. Uh, I'd like to thank Mr. Talame, uh, for doing such a fantastic job each and every year, particularly last week, uh, along with Mr. Rommel for organizing just a flawless event that made the community very proud. So, uh, congrats to our graduates, our teachers, our parents, and thank you to our leadership for making this a nice night. So, uh, we belong to curriculum, something a little bit less, um, exciting, uh, this presentation and graduation photos, but nonetheless very important. Um, we're coming up on fifty years that New Jersey has required students to show proficiency in math and English language arts. Nineteen seventy-seven this began, so this is really not the beginning, okay? Um, all juniors tested in March, and last week I sent a letter out to all the parents explaining that there are multiple ways to meet the graduation requirement, so it's not something that we want to cancel. Um, students who did not perform well on the NJGPA will still meet this requirement. They can meet it through the PSAT or the SAT, or, uh, about a fifth of our students meet it through the graduation portfolio. So, as I said, for the month here, um, if students want to, um, accomplish this requirement and take this burden off their backs so their senior year can be relaxing and enjoyable, as such, um, we're going to offer it in July. Now, every student has to take this test, but as I showed in this slide, there are multiple ways to meet the requirement. So we've got three or four students that missed sitting for it in March, and they've got a few dozen students that would prefer to take this test in July and give it another crack. Now, if they don't do well again, it's still not a problem because we're going to get them started on the portfolio in late September, early October, and hopefully by the time Thanksgiving comes, they're done with it. Right? This usually drag on into the spring, and we're very pleased with the efforts that we successfully put into place to, um, have this requirement wrapped up for our students, um, certainly by Christmas and all, so to be honest. So, um, we make this exceedingly clear in our letter. In forty-eight years, no student who has ever cooperated with our efforts to put that caveat there, it is sometimes the new students to work with us to make sure the portfolio is completed. No student fails to graduate if they work with our efforts to support that. Right? And the portfolio process, it's a great assessment. Uh, it's actually a really quality experience. You work with a teacher, you guide the practice, you, uh, get assessed, you work on what you need improvement on, and you kind of retest. So, um, we're prepared to support all our students to graduate. Now, here are our results. As you can see, I would call that a tie, although we're one tenth of a percent above the English language arts, we are essentially at the state level. Uh, we're glad to be seeing here at half four, at ten. We're certainly pleased that we're at the state level, but it is by no means, um, reaching our level of satisfaction, so we have continued work to do. This is the third year students have taken this assessment. If you look at a three-year window, you'll see about a seven percent increase from two years ago, even though this past year our, our rate in math was down one percent. But the trend is showing some significantly positive growth, along with a three percent increase in English. So we're at the state rate, we're improving, we're far from satisfied, okay? Um, we are required to show this demographic data, and I'll try and do it with a very condensed presentation. Everything on the screen here is on our website for the community to look at live if they're so interested. You'll see those large portions blacked out for privacy. If a demographic group has zero to nine students, we are not permitted to share that information as it is somewhat narrowly, um, aligned to that group of students, okay? Um, I'm just going to highlight a few demographic groups here. First of all, participation. Our students are very cooperative, um, and that's very strong. Our female students in both English and math did show greater rates of proficiency. Um, not dramatic here in math, but still greater. Our economically disadvantaged students and our students with disabilities, they, there's a gap there, right? Students without disabilities and students that are not economically disadvantaged far exceed their peers. However, the encouraging news here is this is the closest that gap has been in the three years since the GPA has started. Um, I was on a call for an hour today with the Department of Education with Mrs. Porter Lanning, working specifically on this, how to further narrow this gap, okay? Um, we want to see a much greater alignment between students across the board and proficiency, and I think this should be like the usual for most districts. Looking at language arts again, participation was very strong. Strikingly higher level of proficiency for female students. It should come as no surprise. Adolescent girls read, and they're far more interested in literature, and our effort is to adjust our curriculum through choice reading and through other measures to make sure that what we have students read is appealing to our male students, and that they're more getting used to reading, and that this gap can be closed. Uh, very similar trend here. Socioeconomic status and disability, those create a gap. Once again, in language arts as well, we're not pleased with this gap. It has been narrowed since we began administering this assessment. So, um, again, this demographic, that is on our website, some strategies to improve across the board. Number one, when teachers give a common assessment that is aligned to the standards, and then they meet, then look at the results, and they discuss how their students did on that standard-aligned assessment, that moves the needle. Next, all students, not just those that can, um, excel, all students need to see and engage with test-like questions. I don't think that was widely done in those districts at a certain point, because some of them are very challenging, um, and we've gotten much more, um, done a better job at ensuring that all students see these questions before the test. Our PLCs, our teachers fit together and they work, uh, and it's improved each year. They share best practices. Um, and I'm happy to say number four, uh, I spent a morning today with, um, the administrators from our semi-districts. We're meeting monthly, we're having some really good dialogue, and we're excited to not just share the best practices of St. Math and DLA at High Rock, but the levels, the best practices of our colleges and the middle schools, um, that are, are in our region. So we're working with them, um, to put our heads together and try and collectively improve. Again, all of this is on the website. You can see the past three years, um, if you're so inclined to look at it. So, this is the thing I had last week, we're required to publicly present. We put it on our website, we share the results with the students, we offer students a chance to retest, um, and we plan to support our, our kids and make sure they improve as well.
Um, for that chance, the later the more alternative with DLA, so are the students, is there an alternative than NJGPA, or are they also expected to sit for that?
Uh, excellent question. There is. So if you are, uh, if your IEP, uh, has a certain exemption, you do not sit for the NJGPA. It's a very small number of students that don't sit for it. Again, remember, the GPA requirement, which is absolute, is that you sit for the GPF, not passing. Approximately one to two percent of our students with IEPs, um, are not, um, appropriately placed in that assessment and they take the L. There is a relatively small number of our students with IEP. It was one point seven five, um, so it was one or two students that took the, uh, the All right, great, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to action items. Uh, break room instruction.
Okay, moving on to action items. I have a great feeling with construction.
So, items one through three are the faculty attendant student and suspension reports for May with attachments. And I will draw attention to that, and then I will be moving items four through nine together. Item four is the harassment, defamation, bullying report, May twenty-eighth through June twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five. Number five are field trips. There are not any on that attachment. Number six are professional development and active youth with a attachment, and there are a few. Number seven is the work-based learning program that authorized this to be part of the extended school year program for the summer. Number eight is the comprehensive equity plan for school years twenty-twenty-five all the way through twenty-twenty-eight. Item nine is to approve the submission of the Carl D. Perkins Clear Tech Grant for applications for fiscal year twenty-six in the following amounts, and accept that he grant awarded funds of incentive for the applicable applications. Making a motion seeking a second?
Second.
And any discussion?
Ms. Diaz?
Yes.
Ms. Schuman?
Yes.
Mr. Vanstone?
Yes.
Ms. Wise?
Yes.
Ms. Orsi?
Yes.
Ms. Longberg?
Yes.
Ms. Ball?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes. That's great construction technology. Next up, we have personnel.
So, there's a lot of personnel. I have the second, I have items one through twenty-one together. The first is approving Dr. Denise.
Todd.
Todd, thank you, as the school doctor. Number two, approving Mr. Ernest Turner as the treasurer of school monies. Number three, approving the tech shelter annuity companies as listed. Number four, approving Scott Rickett as the HIV anti-bullying coordinator. Number five, approving Jim Wright as the attendance officer and school safety specialist. Number six, approving Jam Wright as the HIV anti-bullying specialist. Number seven, approving the appointment of Cheyenne Finocari, Finocari, sorry for uttering the name, as the homeless liaison. Number eight, approving the supervisor of buildings and grounds as the positions as listed. Number nine, appointing Shamus Campbell as title nine coordinator. Number ten, appointing Courtney Delaney as the five oh four coordinator. Number eleven, approving the affirmative action team as follows. Number twelve, accepting the resignation of Paul Cardinal, technology education teacher. Number thirteen, accepting resignation from Barbara McElroy, paraprofessional. Number fourteen, accepting the resignation of Sean Babcock, Brown's custodian. Number fifteen, approving Joshua Saly as Brown's custodian. Number sixteen, approving the adjusted timeframe of the previously approved sixth period teaching assignment as follows. Number seventeen, approving to extend a previously approved family leave absence. Number eighteen, approving Reagan Tokar as summer custodial worker. Number nineteen, approving Deborah Sweller as substitute assistance transportation coordinator. Number twenty, approving the summer workshop days as listed. And number twenty-one, approving the substitute custodians as listed. I'm making a motion, seeking a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Ms. Orsi?
Yes.
Ms. Diaz?
Okay, ready?
Okay, ready.
Yes, to all except for number three, where I need to abstain from security benefit.
Ms. Ball?
Yes.
Mr. Vanstone?
Yes.
Ms. Wise?
Yes.
Ms. Longberg?
Yes.
Ms. Schuman?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Then item twenty-two, withholding the step in salary adjustment increments for employee number six one three. I'm making a motion, seeking a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that item?
Ms. Orsi?
Yes.
Ms. Wise?
Yes.
Mr. Vanstone?
Yes.
Ms. Schuman?
Yes.
Ms. Diaz?
Yes.
Ms. Ball?
Yes.
Ms. Longberg?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Then we have items twenty-three through twenty-eight. Approving, number twenty-three, approving Robert Roberts, excuse me, Robert Alassen as the three-fits teacher of special education and a two-fits paraprofessional. Number twenty-four, approving Brianna Watts for part-time leave replacement for evidence counselor. Number twenty-five is approving Joe Makowitz as the interim business administrator. Number twenty-five, approving Mary Catherine Polplush as business administrator slash board secretary. Number twenty-seven, approving Kelly Douglas Smith as three-fits teacher of English language arts and theater. Number twenty-eight is approving Grace Birch as the substitute custodian. So, I'm making a motion and seeking a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Vanstone?
Yes.
Ms. Schuman?
Yes.
Ms. Ball?
Yes.
Ms. Longberg?
Yes.
Ms. Wise?
Yes.
Ms. Orsi?
Yes.
Ms. Diaz?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
I will move items one through five under extracurricular. One is a recommendation to accept the resignation of Cheyenne Indicario as assistant cheerleading coach. Item two is a recommendation to approve John Mayer and Miriam Holder to assist with sports physicals on July third and August seventh. Item three is a recommendation to approve the extracurricular appointments for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six year as found in the attachment. Item four is a recommendation to approve rivalry sports medicine as a provider of substitute athletic trainers for twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six school year as listed. And item five is a recommendation to approve Melissa Ragnetti as a substitute athletic trainer at the rate as listed. So, I will make that motion on item five. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on any of those items?
Ms. Longberg?
Yes.
Ms. Wise?
Yes.
Ms. Orsi?
Yes.
Mr. Vanstone?
Yes.
Ms. Ball?
Yes.
Ms. Diaz?
Yes.
Ms. Schuman?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes. Moving over policy negotiations and buildings and grounds to finance. So, under finance, I will move items one through seven as a block. One is a recommendation to accept the report of the board secretary, business administrator for the month of May twenty-twenty-five. Item two is a recommendation to accept the report of the treasurer for May twenty-twenty-five. Item three is a recommendation to approve the report of transfers and minimum mixed transfer report for May twenty-twenty-five. Item four is a recommendation to approve payment for the attached debtful awarded bills date of June twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five. Item five is a recommendation to accept adult education agency account, athletic account, cafeteria account, construction account, principals' pay cash account, scholarship account, school store, and student activities reconciliations for May twenty-twenty-five. Item six is a recommendation to approve the schedule of tax payments for twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six school year. And item seven is a recommendation to accept the annual fiscal year twenty-twenty-four audit reports, which include the annual comprehensive financial report, the auditor's management report disseminated at January board meeting, and approve the attached corrective action plan findings for fiscal year twenty-twenty-four. I will make that motion. Can I have a second?
Second.
Any comments on those items in finance?
Mr. Vanstone?
Yes.
Ms. Wise?
Yes.
Ms. Diaz?
Yes.
Ms. Schuman?
Yes.
Ms. Ball?
Yes.
Ms. Longberg?
Yes.
Ms. Orsi?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes. I will move next items eight through eleven. Eight is a recommendation to approve the following vendors for professional services for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six year, and that is as listed. Item nine is a recommendation to approve mileage reimbursements for incentive travel expenses for twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six year. Item ten is a recommendation to approve the following resolution for school alliance funding commissioner for the current year. I'm not going to read that whole resolution, but basically it approves the school alliance fund commissioner. Item eleven is a recommendation to approve the resolution authorizing monies to be transferred into capital reserve at the end of the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five school year, and that is as listed. I will say that the item has been determined to, the amount not to exceed eight hundred thousand dollars available for such purpose. So, I'll make that motion, item two eleven. Can I have a second? Correct. Any comments or discussion on those items?
Ms. Diaz?
Yes.
Ms. Schuman?
Yes.
Ms. Orsi?
Yes.
Ms. Wise?
Yes.
Ms. Ball?
Yes.
Mr. Vanstone?
Yes.
Ms. Longberg?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes. Okay, moving on. Items twelve through seventeen, I would like to move together. Twelve is a recommendation to authorize execution agreement between water management services and High Point School District. And thirteen is a recommendation for an agreement, approval agreement between High Point and JDP Therapy for occupational physical and speech therapy for upcoming school year as listed. Item fourteen is a recommendation to approve following lunch prices for the current school year, upcoming school year, sorry, and they are as listed. Item five is a recommendation to approve a student accident insurance renewal proposal between High Point and Bollinger Specialty with the dates and premium as listed. Item sixteen is a recommendation to approve an agreement with Sussex County Ed Services Commission for ancillary educational services as needed during the upcoming school year. And item seventeen is a recommendation to approve an agreement with the Ed Services Commission of Horace County for ancillary educational services as needed during that. So, I'll make that motion on those items eleven through seventeen. May I have a second?
Second.
Any comments, discussion?
Ms. Wise?
Yes.
Mr. Vanstone?
Yes.
Ms. Schuman?
Yes.
Ms. Diaz?
Yes.
Ms. Ball?
Yes.
Ms. Longberg?
Yes.
Ms. Orsi?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes. Okay, eighteen, I'm going to read it as written, and I'm going to immediately propose a modification. Be it resolved that the Board of Education authorizes withdrawal from capital reserve funds not to exceed two hundred and thirty thousand dollars for the purpose of milling and paving the front entrance exit of the school during the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six school year. I'll make that motion. May I have a second?
Second.
Okay, now we have a second. Just want to mention that we have reviewed this one and determined that we actually need to have that number adjusted upwards to three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars just to make sure that we have that amount fully covered. So, I will make a motion to amend the motion that will read as follows. That the Board of Education authorizes a withdrawal from capital reserve funds not to exceed three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for the purpose of milling and paving the front entrance exit of the school during the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six school year. So, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay.
Just briefly, that is inclusive of some things that were not incorporated into the initially anticipated job, which would include curves now and drainage that was not included in the initial bid quote, dare you jump quotes, sorry, I don't know. And so, it was necessary to increase it so as to be more thorough calculation of all that is required to do the job.
And it is a not to exceed amount, so we don't necessarily have to go to the limit, just looking for some agreement. Any comments or discussion on that to vote on the amended motion?
So, we're voting on. Do you have to vote for the amendment?
Do we have to vote for the amendment? Well.
We didn't vote at all.
We didn't vote on the other one, but we don't want it, yeah.
So. We want to vote on.
We're voting on the amendment now.
Just on the amendment.
Just on the amendment, and then we'll, then we'll vote to accept the amendment, okay?
First you accept the amendment.
Okay, so, so to be clear, the motion is to accept the amendment for this motion.
Right.
Okay, so that's the first vote.
Got it. All right, Mr. Vanstone?
Yes.
Ms. Longberg?
Yes.
Ms. Wise?
Yes.
Ms. Orsi?
Yes.
Ms. Ball?
Yes.
Ms. Schuman?
Yes.
Ms. Diaz?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
All right.
And then we will now vote. So, we don't have more comments?
You just have a vote.
We just have a vote on the amended, okay? Hope it's not any different. Yeah.
Oh, so we're voting.
Yeah, we have to vote.
Yeah, now you have to actually vote on the motion. First you move on the amendment, and then you vote on the motion.
Right.
Got it.
And we already have a second for the motion, so you don't need to have another second.
Got it.
So, you can just have a vote.
All right. Ready?
Yep.
Ms. Diaz?
Yes.
Ms. Schuman?
Yes.
Ms. Ball?
Yes.
Mr. Vanstone?
Yes.
Ms. Longberg?
Yes.
Ms. Wise?
Yes.
Ms. Orsi?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
All right.
Okay, now I can read through that. I would like to move item nineteen alone. Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby approves the agreement with the High Point Education Association effective July first, twenty twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-nine as in attachment G eight. I will make that motion. May I have a second?
Correct.
Any discussion or comments?
And this is the memorandum of agreement, not the finalized contract?
We don't.
We all approve of the contract.
Yeah, so only the contract that hasn't actually been fully typed yet, but it is. It has, all the details of it have been signed off on in individual in the memorandum of agreement. The salary tables that all have been.
Okay.
Terminated.
The salary tables are included in attachment G eight.
I'd just like to thank the negotiations team publicly for their work in negotiating with our partners on the other side of the aisle, the HPA, and coming to this five-year agreement, which, by my understanding, was accepted overwhelmingly by the HPA as well, so. Thank you, those participants.
Thank you, members of the committee. It's a lot of work and a lot of time. You were very professional and gracious in the manner that you carried yourselves, and I very much appreciate it. Thank you.
More comments?
Ms. Schuman?
Yes.
Mr. Vanstone?
Yes.
Ms. Wise?
Yes.
Ms. Orsi?
Yes.
Ms. Longberg?
Yes.
Ms. Ball?
Yes.
Ms. Diaz?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes. Okay, item twenty is a recommendation to approve the disposal of recycling of IT department items that are obviously in disrepair. They are on attachment G nine. I'm going to move that one alone, so I can move some others. So, I'll make a second, or I see, I'll make the motion, may I have a second?
Second.
And I'm in second.
Ms. Diaz?
Yes.
Ms. Wise?
Yes.
Ms. Schuman?
Yes.
Ms. Orsi?
Yes.
Ms. Ball?
Yes.
Ms. Longberg?
Yes.
Mr. Vanstone?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes. Moving along to item twenty-one. Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby approves the agreement with the High Point Administrators Association effective July first, twenty twenty-five through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight. I will make that motion also. May I have a second?
Second.
Any comments or discussion there? My same comments, lauding the members of the negotiation team by there as well. Although that one went a little quicker.
All right, Ms. Ball?
Yes.
Mr. Vanstone?
Yes.
Ms. Wise?
Yes.
Ms. Diaz?
Yes.
Ms. Schuman?
Yes.
Ms. Longberg?
Yes.
Ms. Orsi?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes. I'd like to move items twenty-three through, uh, twenty-two through twenty-five together. Twenty-two is a recommendation that the Board acknowledges and greatly accepts a gift card donation from Renetto in the amount of fifty dollars used for supplies for our community garden. Twenty-three is a recommendation to authorize execution of agreement for maintenance of the BMS system between AME Incorporated and High Point School District for the upcoming school year, the amount listed. Item twenty-four is a recommendation to approve and authorize execution of the school crew authority vendor contract with Montague Township School as listed. And item twenty-five is a recommendation to approve and authorize the execution of the following tuition contracts between High Point and the sending of the districts listed in related information. So, I will make that motion on twenty-two through twenty-five. Can I have a second?
Second.
Comments? Thank you to Renetto for your donation.
Mr. Vanstone?
Yes.
Ms. Schuman?
Yes.
Ms. Ball?
Yes.
Ms. Wise?
Yes.
Ms. Orsi?
Yes.
Ms. Longberg?
Yes.
Ms. Diaz?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes. So, I would like to add an item twenty-six at the table. The item was. So I would like to add an item 26 at the table. The item would be a resolution, be it resolved that the Board authorizes EI associates to amend and submit the district's long-range facility plan, including all amendments major and minor. So I'll make that motion, could I have a second?
Second.
Second, so now that we have a second, I'll just mention the purpose of why this is being added after the agenda was released and the importance thereof. This is a resolution that allows our previous architect who had prepared our last district long-range facility plan to make a modification that allows us to include some of the changes that we needed to, that we needed to adjust that earlier item for, and get that included in our long-range facilities plan, which is a prerequisite of being able to withdraw funds from our capital reserve account and utilize them for those items that are listed in our long-range facilities plan, primarily being the milling and repaving of the front entrance, all the extra work associated with that. Any questions on that or comments or thoughts that capture?
Pretty good.
All right, so that's the motion. It's been seconded.
Ms. Diaz?
Yes.
Ms. Schuman?
Yes.
Ms. Ball?
Yes.
Mr. Vanstone?
Yes.
Ms. Longberg?
Yes.
Ms. Wise?
Yes.
Ms. Orsi?
Yes.
Ms. Dunn?
Yes.
Can I be transportation? Mr. Vanstone?
All righty, I'll be moving a very short number, nine together. The first one is a legal contract that is as listed. Number two is another court of contract, the ESI program. Number three is a contract for parent, execution of parent contract for transportation. And four is the contract for the ESI program. Five is, five, I think five is a joint transportation agreement, and I need to rest all of the six, the joint transportation agreement as listed, as are seven, eight, and nine, they are all joint transportation agreements. So I'm moving on, items 1 through 9, do I have a second?
Second.
Oh, do we have any discussion? Really talk of transportation, okay. Okay, could I have a little call?
Ms. Orsi?
Yes.
Ms. Wise?
Yes.
Ms. Longberg?
Yes.
Mr. Vanstone?
Yes.
Ms. Ball?
Yes.
Ms. Schuman?
Yes.
Ms. Diaz?
Yes.
Ms. Dunn?
Yes.
Okay, we've got some action items, we have the course comments, under miscellaneous, our school board mandated training, standing item. So that brings us to second public comments, section of the evening, same rules apply to this session as well as the first, although it's open to all any items. Let's see, see anybody in the room, do we have, have anybody virtual? No, anyone's going twice, may I have a motion to close, public comments?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Non-committed board member reports and comments, anyone?